You. Ready, Brad?
Yep.
You guys, five seconds it looks like. Okay, at this time I'll call the June 19th, 2014 County Commission meeting to order. You'd please stand and join in the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our next item is the approval of the agenda and no additions to the agenda. So I'll move that we approve the agenda as written.
Second.
We have the motion and the second for approval of the agenda as written. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Consent agenda, this would be from the minutes of June 12th work session and the regular meeting. It also includes the payroll, $341,514.97 and wire payments of $2,412.35.
I may we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, we have the motion and the second for approval of the consent agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, Craig, if you'd go ahead and lead us off on wish or comments.
I got an email from Sergi Vasquezco. I don't have, Vasquezco Brad wants information as a serious real estate investor, is my intent to purchase one or more properties, not sold the latest deed option. So that's the only thing I got on computer and I've nothing else.
Okay. Laverne?
Yeah, yesterday was our juvenile detention meeting and occasionally we do meet at some of the other counties besides going down to Jackson City. So this meeting was up in Sleen County and it did give us a chance to talk to all three commissioners that attend the meeting and they pretty much assured us that they were happy with their kids going over to Erie County to our juvenile detention center there and that plans that they were looking at for building jails did not include the juvenile center in Sleet County. So it did give us some assurance that they are there for the long haul now and we did pass our budget for next year and like I say, they make up about half of our budget with the amount of kids that they're sending over there. So that has been a benefit as far as if they wouldn't have joined, like I say, efficiency wise, we would have had to increase our budget quite a bit if they wouldn't have been picking up a share of that.
So I guess that's, Lynn, if you want to kind of cover some of the items we had in our work session.
Okay. Yeah, before I do that, about the only thing I had was there's a board meeting for the Central Kansas Mental Health Association and of course, we're one of the counties that participate in that. And about the only thing that maybe came up that maybe we could consider give some input on, they are considering a revision of the bylaws and going to look at the bylaws. And one of the items that came up would be how many representatives there would be on the board. And sometimes you have the discussion that it's more manageable on a board and you move more efficiently if it's a smaller board and they're thinking about reducing the number, you know, possibly eight to 10. And probably the only two counties that this would impact would be Dickinson County and Sleen County. Sleen County has six members on the board. Dickinson County has three members on the board. The other counties that are involved have one member representative. So we would probably still have someone from each county and it's just a matter of if we would adjust that number for Dickinson County. And right before we did go into our regular meeting, as far as the work study is concerned, Martin was in here and John Goff and one of the things we talked about, we had kind of an updated report and also Brad had provided us this in advance and it's a bridge repair and replacement status. And some of this discussion involves the fact that we have considered a sales tax as an alternative for a solution, but what it is, is the problem that we're trying to address is they have assessed the situation with some of our bridges and the funding mechanisms and, you know, we're going to start to have an uphill battle on this because we have a lot of roads throughout the county and without the bridges, I mean, that's the real key is to have an access. And there are some of the bridges that are fracture critical bridges. There are some that we know that there's some problems with, but also there are some, you know, bridges that are main thoroughfares and it used to be from what they had mentioned is that we, you know, sometimes could look at replacing some of these bridges, you know, annually or every few years while the funding mechanism has changed and so we're going to really run into some problems. And they did identify some of the bridges and I don't know, Brad, do you want to add on to some of that discussion?
Well, one thing that just came to mind that we had mentioned earlier was I know you guys all got the county email and county comment from KC. Very good article in the KC's monthly newsletter came out a couple days ago, ignoring about our own bridges on this exact topic and how it affects local government. So get a chance if I look at that. But, you know, I mean, it's an obstacle we face in the future. We've done a really good job keeping up with it. We're not in a panning situation by any means, but we just need to be very cautious how we proceed and be prepared so we don't get into a bind, so.
And some of this is, you know, it's a long-term type planning. So if we would wait till there was some sort of crisis then we're, you know, we really would be in a dilemma. So I appreciate the fact that they, you know, did give us those updates. They, I don't know if either of you would want to comment additionally on this, otherwise I'll move on to that.
Well, we are already talking long-term on a lot of these and like I said, the schedule that they gave us here, we're talking about some bridges that throughout the 2028, you know, so, you know, we're talking a lot of years ahead, but we know, well, we've got one here that's going to be, that has to be taken care of within the next year or so, but then 2018, 2022, 2025 on some of those. So, but you do have to have the money available when the bridge, if it does fail, you have to have money available.
One thing is certain is they will fail and they'll come to a point where they need a repair to replace. We just don't know exactly when, but we need to remain proactive in that and be, have a funding mechanism or repair mechanism in place, so.
Just a couple of things I want to pull out from the report. Is the federal funding is administered by KDOT and Dickinson County has 300 bridges. Generally, these bridges have a sufficiency rating averaging slightly less than 80, which is the funding eligibility start. The other part that I think is one of the main things we're addressing, and once again, just reading from the report, it says, "These bridges have been designed and are sitting on the shelf at KDOT awaiting funding. Changing the federal funding system extends the schedule." So some of these, we are actually looking out, like you said, to 2028 or 2025 and, you know, to, rather than just to kind of wait and see what happens, I think we need to be in a position where we can solve some of the situation if the funding does not come back in place. And so anyway, we're trying to gather information and get more information out to the public so they're aware of the situation and certainly welcome any questions that people would have. The other two reports that we had, Sheriff Gareth Hoffman came in to discuss some vehicles and equipment and we had instructed him to go ahead and gather some information on replacement of a vehicle because we had one that was totaled out from an accident. And then also we were looking at some camera equipment for the vehicles and so he's in the process of making a procurement of that equipment and updating that equipment. We also heard a report from Brenda Finnbauer's Department of Aging and she's the coordinator and she had just kind of gave us an update on how some of the activity and involvement and the blood pressure checks and so on actually is on the decline in some of the senior centers. And it seems, you know, that that's an important part and it's not going to be neglected, but she did mention, you know, statistically, we have a decline as far as the usage and activity and number of wheels on wheels. So that's basically what we had. Are there any other comments? Otherwise, we'll go ahead and move on and we'll hear a report from Brad Holman.
Just a couple of things this morning, giving an update on the Rock Springs Ranch situation. I did go down Tuesday and met with the manager there and since spoken to the director of the Rock Springs or Kansas Forest Foundation at Manhattan. And he seemed to be acceptable to the offer that he had made. He coincidentally has a board meeting coming up Monday on, that was set for other issues and he said, "The timing's good, he can take it to go to his board and discuss it with them." And I did get an email back to him this morning and he had one question. He said, "I really hadn't asked, but he said, "What happens if they, if they don't agree to this?" And I said, "Well," my response simply was, "It would be a county commission decision, but it would be difficult for us to go out and continue maintaining this structure and we have no nexus that just public right of way exists." So, and the fact that you had paid up to and armed past that bridge and maintained that road indicates to me that it probably isn't public right of way because you take control of it. So I said, "The possibility exists that we'd walk away from it and we'd have anything, but we know the situation they're in and we want to be able to help them and I think we can do that." So it sounds favorable, we'll know Monday. At this point, Martin has contacted the inspector to have him go out next week and look at it ahead of time and we think we can very quickly put a replacement date on that and then get it inspected and handed off to him and do as we discussed last week and get that problem taken care of. So things are looking very positive at this point, so. We did have an issue that surfaced Monday this week, the binding gang attorney's office might be clear, there's an old garage on a neighbor's property, one of the walls started falling down in that garage over towards our property, which in and of itself could be a big issue, but right below that wall at the base was a gas meter. And so the city was called, the city inspector came out and they were condemned and had someone come in that evening actually and knock the walls down so it would take the gas meter out. So I don't think we had really a dog in a hunt. They've taken the city and was very good and took care of the issue, but if you hear about that publicly, I know that the owner of the property, I had heard, wasn't really happy that the city forced him to pay a contractor to come out after hours to do that, so. But the gas meter was a real issue there, but it's been taken care of, so. This week was Camp Nine in One week and I told you before, we had 43 campers, one three Johns here, maybe he could give us a little bit more insight, but it sounds like things went very well at Camp Nine in One.
Yep, I had 40, I actually show up, 38 finished the camp. We had three the first day, but for whatever reason, a couple unmedical reasons, decided not to stay passed in. So, but finished for 38, it was, it went well, very well. It was warm as always, even, but the kids did well, the campers, the counselors did well, the speakers did well, we had a good group of speakers this year and so it was certainly another successful camp. So before we wind up pictures up, our video that we make up will be on the county's website soon, so.
Just an update on our crews are out working on the Key Road South, K4. They're doing some patching out there in preparation for the little bit of overlay we'll be doing on that, getting that in shape. We're also got a crew that's working on a washout on a couple tubes up at 3100 and nail that Woller Wolfert told us about and that we know about. They're also working, pulling some shoulders in on Rain Road, the 1800 block today and we're preparing to replace the tube out at Deer Road and Old Forty. I don't know the way you went around if you drove down Old Forty, there was a lot of water sitting at the corner of Deer and that tube, when they came through and did the shoulder ring, for some reason that tube either got blown up to damage and is no longer draining, so we've got a pretty substantial amount of water sitting at that corner and they, Martin's man looked at it, so they're gonna, they had a guy going, I think to Hutchison today that picked up the tube to come back and we're gonna get that swapped out, so not to worry it'll rain again, so. July 3rd, excuse me, which is two weeks from today, we'll have employee luncheon downstairs, so after the meeting, hopefully you'll have time, since you're providing the meat for that, hopefully you'll have time to attend that. Barbara, I think you said we've got some money left over from what you guys have donated for last year's, or was it this month?
This month.
Yes, that we'll be able to use for that. So we don't need any money from you for this time, it's nice, but we utilize some of that money, we were just so efficient in what we did that we saved some money and so we'll have an employee lunch down there, we'll barbecue hamburgers and hot dogs for everybody, so might plan on staying for lunch, so that's all I've got.
Okay, we'll go to notice and communications, just what Brad had mentioned, the Dickinson County 4th of July lunch is going to be taking place. We have a letter and, or form actually, from Central Kansas Free Fair and this is in regards to anyone that would want to participate in the parade, whether it be commercial, non-commercial youth, or for political purpose. And so, you know, I know sometimes the county commission could choose as a group to be in the parade or individually, or, but you might check your calendars and give some thought to that and we can bring that up. The July 10th is the entry deadline and I don't know that they would do it this way, but it seems like in the most recent years, that when the entry form is turned in, would more likely that the early ones would be at the early part of the parade. I don't know if they'll do it that way this time or not, but I did know that some of the ones that waited until the very, very, very end ended up at the last part of the parade, so. But anyway, it's an excellent parade and we'll, we have that form available for, to fill out if we are going to participate. We received a notice, this is from the Department of Revenue. These are the results of the county official 2013 real estate appraisal sells ratio and this is something that they provide to us and it's kind of gives us a little bit of a checkup as far as how our appraiser is doing. I noticed there is a 99.6 is what we had for the residential properties, so that was well within the confidence rating that, and that's based on 170 sales in the county this past year. And so it also includes the commercial farmland and ag land and so on, so this would be available for anyone to look at and.
I think it's the same report I gave you last week, so.
Yeah, Cruz has been, has a very good record of being very accurate with his appraisals and coming out that close year after year.
Okay, and then we had also to all county appraisers, county clerks, county commissioners, county treasurer and register of deeds, and this is from Roger Hamm, Deputy Director of the Division of Property Evaluation, and he had asked that this be given to us and it's just really a summary of some of the changes that have taken place in property tax laws. And so this can be personal property watershed, definitions of commercial and industrial machinery and equipment, so we have that that we've received also. And I think the only other two items from equipment world, we have a magazine and also the Commercial Carrier Journal sent us a magazine and has some articles in it for reading and the Kansas Workers Risk Cooperative for Counties also, they've sent us out a report. So this would be available for review. And really, it looks like it's just kind of an informational type report on severe weather safety and lightning safety, so. Okay, that would be all that we have. Are there any other notices or communications any of you have received?
No.
Okay, moving on, the only other two items we have under other business, first is to review and consider an update to Section 605 of the county handbook and reference to weapons. And so if you'll go ahead and give us a summary report on that, Brad?
Yes, so in Section 605 bills of weapons, basically what the only change to that is striking the sentence highlighted in yellow, which states, "Any concealed carry license holder who intends to carry a firearm in pursuit of county employment shall provide a copy of their concealed carry license to do the research or their doing." So as you're aware, the legislature are in their system, in terms, we no longer have the authority to do that. So it coincides with the new state law, which is kind of House 2578, we're striking that from the policy, that's a little change.
Yeah, Brad, I had a question, the next paragraph under that one, we still can permit prohibit them from carrying a firearm in our county vehicles?
That's our understanding, now that may.
If it's county owned.
If it's county owned, yeah.
Okay, maybe that's where I'm getting confused.
Yeah, it's my understanding we can, unless that's challenged and we get a court ruling that says otherwise, but.
Well, there was, you know, I've read things and it's kind of confusing whether we have that authority or not, I guess.
There was a question during legislative hearings about that, they did not include that in the explanation of the bill, so I think we can still, at least at this point, that part can remain in the policy, so.
Okay, so we'll need a motion to amend and make that change on Section 605 of the county handbook.
So move.
I'll say it.
We have the motion and we have the second for that change. Any further discussion or comment? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item we have is to consider the ambulance bid and as you know, we had the bids were open, we had two packets we received last week and one of them was just informational and then the other did have a bid and so we had asked John Holgren to go ahead and review those and kind of checklist off to make sure everything was in place.
Okay, I did review the bid that was presented by Professional Ambulance of Comanche, Texas. This is the dealer that we purchased our last truck from back in 2012. It's their dealer for Horton, which is the brand that we bought last time. And it was, the bid was for 277, 166, I believe.
Yes, 227.
And reviewing it, it was per our specifications without exception. So there had no exceptions to anything in there. The bid was for 230 to 250 days construction after the acceptance of the bid. So that would put us delivery February, March timeframe for the truck, so. If accepted, there is, much like in the past, there's nothing due until we take acceptable delivery of the truck, so it would be paid for out of next year's budget. So, you know, in reviewing it, obviously, you know, I think I spoke to you last time, the company, the dealership in Texas has been really good to work with and Andy will back that up as far as any, you know, warranty type stuff we've had or parts and getting parts up to it. Horton is a well-built truck, certainly we talk about and we'll certainly strongly, strongly consider remounting the box onto a new chassis of these trucks, so. They're a well-built truck and I think, you know, some of the safety stuff and that's probably why we did not have any other bids because they can't meet the standards that this truck does. We're talking about remounting and the construction used to get a truck to last 20 years because we're getting them to last about 10 on a chassis and then if we put a new chassis and run another 10 years, we want a box that's going to hold up for 20 years. And, you know, that's certainly why we probably had no other bids on it because, I don't know if you had a chance to look at that mock-up of the truck and pick it up, but it, that's heavy. That's built very well and some of the cheaper trucks don't meet that and I, you know, we may get in a situation where we, at the end of 10 years, have a box that's not worth remounting on another chassis and going another 10 years with, so. So my recommendation with it is to purchase it, it is on a Freightliner chassis, which after checking, that was Andy's recommendation, we looked between International and Freightliner and Freightliner and talking to the dealer would be about $6,000 less for the chassis than an International. And I did talk to Riley County, which has ran a couple Freightliners for four or five years now and had good luck with them. Obviously, we have a Freightliner dealership at Salina if we have issues, warranty type issues early on, so it won't be a big deal to get them worked on. They had two options for engines, they could put a Cummings engine in it or a Mercedes engine and certainly Andy requested the Cummings engine rather than the Mercedes engine, which is what it's spec for, so. My recommendation would be to do with the Horton truck from Comanche, or from Professional Ambulance of Comanche, Texas.
Any questions or comments from the question?
We will, you have some figures that would be close. When we remount this, is the truck about half of the cost of this or will we save about half by remounting?
Yeah, and that's tough to say because when we remount one, it depends on what, how far they need to go, you know, if they, and I'll say that it should be pretty good for us because, you know, we keep them in pretty good shape, the box itself. But if they have to go in and, I mean, they can go down to put new linoleum in them and then put new upholstery on the seats and, you know, it all depends on how far they need to go to redo it, but, you know, if you're really hard on it, they strip them clear down and just redo the whole inside, but hopefully in our truck situation, that wouldn't be the case, so. But I, I think we could probably save 20, $25,000 probably over, you know, buying a new one, maybe better than that.
I would think so.
So, maybe better than that.
So we haven't had one remounted?
We have not remounted one yet, no, because we just started the cycle of buying these heavier duty trucks that are.
What, Riley County, have they had any down or any other John?
They have not been through the remount thing either yet.
Okay.
But with the price of things, that's, there's a lot of places looking at that as opposed to replacing them. I talked to the director out at Hayes, they just, just accepted bids for a Horton, same company, but they went with the old van chassis that we're trying to get away from and I think theirs was about $190,000 is what their bid was for their truck with the van chassis on it, so.
Yeah, I think we'd be well ahead of that.
We're certainly well ahead as far as what we've seen so far and the wear and tear that, you know, that these heavier duty trucks withstand that the van doesn't and then just the, like I told you last week, the downtime for them guys to find leaks and stuff like that in a van is just horrible. It takes them a day just to dig. And it takes them a day just to dig down to find the problem, so.
Just a quick question, that, that they didn't put the same, I mean, there's different beds that go on here, so they couldn't have put a heavier bed on here, I wouldn't have thought.
On.
The one at Hayes.
No, no. It's just a.
I was going to say, yeah.
It's just a, it's just a ton, ton truck chassis under it. It's all it is, but it's a van, a van chassis.
Considerably smaller box.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, there's no way you can handle a box like this truck's.
No, no, no. It's, it's smaller box, it's smaller construction. And quite frankly, we've had the vans, we've got a van that we're trying to get rid of and they're, they're overloaded before they ever.
Yeah.
And, and you notice that when you, the wear and tear on the chassis is, is tough. I, I would steer away clear from ever going back to that. And just the maintenance issues is just, but I mean, there's places to do it and it's a cheap truck, so.
Well, depending on where you run them.
Yeah.
And maybe you run them.
And they, and they, you know, go back to places like Topeka that'll still run the old, the van chassis and they're just throwaway. They run them five years and they, you know, they're private contractor, they throw them away and buy a new one, you know? But when we, when we have to keep them and keep them the amount of time that we need to keep them and then look at remounting, I think it's smarter to go with the, the better one off the bat. That's what we're going to do.
And on this, when we, when we approach the delivery time, we'll know about when it's delivered and we'll get the bags in line and we'll do a lease purchase on it, the same ones we have with the others. The others are paid off this year, so we will just continue that lease purchase cycle. And it is in the capital plan, so.
I don't have the amount here.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's $227,166 from Freightliner M2 Horton 623 type one ambulance.
So moved. I'll say it then. Okay. We have the motion and the second for approval of this purchase. It's a 2015 Freightliner M-2 Horton 623 type one ambulance, $227,000, or $227,166. And the approximate delivery time is 220 to 250 days, which is going to put it approximately in February of next year. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Sean, while you're here, for sometime in August, again, the, Lundine thinks that my explanation's great. I'd like to have, you know, if you come in, you know, work session sometime and, and go through the, you know, how that was, that was started and what your procedures are for call-out and stuff.
Okay. I can do that.
Good.
Yeah, I'll get with Brad and just we'll work out a date.
You know, when you come in and report?
Well, I don't know that I.
I'm not, there's no, I mean, we've got budget meetings.
Yeah, I don't know that I'm in until September, October.
Well, I, no, I just, yeah.
Is September soon enough?
Oh, yeah. No, I just wanted to.
Yeah. I can go with policies. I can't get specific on a specific patient.
No, no, I know, you know, but, you know, I was.
Policies on?
Yeah, like, you know, the run from and stuff like that.
Yeah. I think it's for you guys to know with your question.
Yeah. Yeah, like I said, that's fine. You can just come in September.
Okay. All right. I'll just do it when I, when I come in.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah.
One thing before we do have our adjournment, I will mention, Janelle did give us our, the start of our 2015 budget and we are having that information gathered and, and we're going to have more information coming in, but that is something that will be on our plate here pretty much for July, next, yeah, starting next week actually, so. Next two or three weeks. And, and we are going to have some of our meetings like on July 3rd that are, would start at eight o'clock in the morning.
Next week.
Or next week too.
And July 3rd.
Okay. And, and those are open to the public.
Send an email on that one there to your head.
If you need, want the reminder. But those, those meetings are open to the public. And so anyone that would want to come in and listen, as all the meetings are, but if they want to come in and listen or if they have questions, we will have that schedule available and that's going to be kind of the centerpiece of our discussions then.
Retreats?
Yeah. Is there a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
I'll say it.
We got the motion and the second for adjournment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We're adjourned.